Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura Ingham and this is your flash briefing for the week of October 21st. City Council meet for regular session Tuesday nights, six in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the record meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The city invites the public to the groundbreaking of the Lee Summit Police South Substation on October 25th at 2:30 PM at 3650 Southwest Windermere Drive. The substation is funded through the 2023 No Tax Increase Bond and will provide basic police services, convenient reporting, and more interaction with citizens and businesses in the south area of the city. Recycle Fest is back on October 26th from 9:00 AM to noon at the city's main facility. Items accepted include license plates, cell phones, rechargeable batteries, wine corks, and even bicycles. Paper shredding will be available up to four grocery sacks. Booze barks and badges will also take place October 26th in downtown Lee Summit from 9:30 to noon. Families and their pets are invited to wear costumes and be part of a parade downtown. Following the parade, trick or treat at participating businesses. Learn more at downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered what's that going to be? What's being built there? Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help, highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri. Streets to West Prior is getting another restaurant on the north end. Chicken Salad Chick, a southern-inspired fast casual chicken salad restaurant, will open next to 30 Hot Bar and Grill, Magic Noodle, and Nick the Greek. The restaurant will offer a variety of scratch-made chicken salads, pimento cheese, sandwiches, and more. It is set to open at the end of 2024. Summit Orchards is welcoming Salad and Go, a drive-through restaurant that specializes in salads, wraps, and breakfast. The Arizona-based restaurant sources fresh, natural ingredients for its salads, house-made dressings, and proteins. Salad and Go is set to open in spring of 2025. Summit Orchards is getting Andy's Frozen Custard. The quick-serve frozen custard-only chain offers a wide variety of custard treats like concretes, jackhammers, sundaes, splits, malts, and more. Andy's is set to open in spring of 2025. Craft Putt is coming soon to Summit Fair. The locally-owned indoor mini golf bar and restaurant will feature two custom-designed 10-hole mini golf courses. The space will offer games, food options like tacos, burgers, and wings, and local craft brews. Craft Putt will open by the end of 2024. That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit cityofls.net.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs, or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically, what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. And that's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then, once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
It's extremely rewarding overall. Just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work. In many cases, leaving the city for employment. And went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council. And so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters, and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it. And to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active, and some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails, I love riding my bike, and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life. You know, very diverse group of families in our community that it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that in many cases, you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we meet as a council in support of our community. We pray that you give us as leaders guidance and courage to do what is right. Let courage fill our hearts that we may not disappoint those that look for leadership and direction to their concerns. Let us press toward the goal, being only concerned with what is best for our community. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 19. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle? Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Pryor?
Here.
Councilmember Raeder?
Present.
Councilmember DeMaro?
Here.
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez? Mayor Baird?
Here.
All right, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. So it looks like with the updates on the software, Mr. Dunning? Okay, never mind. Catch up, maybe? All votes are in, please record the vote. All votes are in, yes, seven to zero passes, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Lovell. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Also, is unanimous, thank you all. And then we have council roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in your district, in the community. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Okay, so I am Councilmember Shields' voice today because she doesn't have a voice. So she wants me to remind everyone the booze-
Lost her voice. She lost her voice. We want to make sure she has a voice. You're making sure she has a voice.
I'm making sure she has a voice. So the booze, barks, and badges parade trick-or-treat thing in downtown is this Saturday at 9:30. Well, you know, the parade things first and then you go to the different stores and get candy. And it's fun, a lot of fun. So, thanks.
Thank you. Right? We're going to get right into some business then. We have some a public hearing. So I will close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A, which is Special Use Permit Renewal for Maintenance Equipment Storage, Rain Tree Lake Maintenance Facility, 504 Southwest 163rd Street. RLPOA is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk?
Good evening, council. My name is Joshua Cresswell. I'm the GM of Operations for RLPOA Rain Tree Lake Property Owners Association. And tonight, we are here to ask for a renewal on our special use permit for our maintenance facility. I'll refer back to Hector and his crew to give you a rundown and a summation.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hector Soto, Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A list of exhibits 1 through 19.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 19.
Mr. Cresswell had mentioned the application before use for a renewal, a special use permit for the continued operation of the Rain Tree Lake Property Owners Association Maintenance Facility that is located down at the southernmost boundary of the city there along north side of 163rd Street. Here's the area you can see to the west, north, and to the east. And in Canary, you can see the property is zoned R1, single-family residential. Everything to the south, including these two pieces of property to the immediate west, are outside the city limits in Cass County, unincorporated. All have agricultural-type zoning. So the building that's out there, it's about approximately 5,000 square feet. It was originally constructed back in 2003. Four parking spaces serve the site. There are a couple overhead doors, one on the north side. And I believe there's another one here on the west-facing side as well. So on the image on the right, you could see that at the time that the property was developed to provide some buffer and screening from the adjacent residential, there was some birmingham that was constructed along the south and east sides of the building that was landscaped. And there was also a solid vinyl fence that you could see a little more clearly on the aerial image on the left. So there was a neighborhood meeting that was held, there were two of them, on August 13th and September 18th. The first meeting, 24 members showed up. There were no objections to the project. There were no members that showed up to the second meeting that was held in September. Staff has also not received any correspondence in any form from any adjacent resident seeking, well, exhibiting or expressing any concern or objection to the renewal of special use permit. So for those that may not be familiar with the specific building, when it was constructed, in order to better fit in with the surrounding residential nature of the building, there were some particular features that were incorporated into the building just to help it blend in a little bit better, just kind of a little bit of a porch. Decorative architectural features, stone columns, a faux chimney on that south, street-facing side. Compliments of the surrounding property as being a single-family residential one, which is reflective of the development of Rain Tree Lake, is a predominantly single-family residential subdivision. There were three conditions of approval that staffs recommended. With condition number one, the only concern that, or issue that the planning commission brought up had to do with more the time period that was recommended. 2003, that was a 10-year time period. 2013, a 10-year period for a special use permit. So the question was brought up by the planning commissions to whether or not they thought that in our staff's view there was any issue with granting a 20-year special use permit, given that there's already been a 20-year track record demonstrated by the RLPOA of abiding by all the conditions of approval for the previously approved special use permits. So at that time, staff doesn't, didn't express any concern with a 20-year period if that's what they chose to recommend. So what's before you here is planning commission's recommendation for a 20-year time period versus 10. So with that, I'll yield to any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant or for staff? Councilmember Raeder?
Thank you, Mayor. So on giving the extension to a 20-year SUP, they have a good track record of maintaining the building. And so if, but it's been on a 10-year, basically on a 10-year renewal. So there wouldn't be any reason for us to believe that there would be a problem in the next 10 years, if they go past the 10 years. But if there was, how do we, can we address that? Or is that something that the HOA takes care of, or, you know?
Give me an example of the nature of a particular concern?
Yeah, so what if the building deteriorates? Begins to deteriorate, and they don't paint it, or, you know? The economy changes and things are bad and they don't have the money to do it. Does that, how does that affect that SUP, or does it?
At that point, we would rely on existing ordinances like the Property Maintenance Code and address it through our neighborhood services that they'd have to abate any kind of property maintenance concern at that point.
Yeah, okay. Well, that answers my question. Thanks, Hector. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Are there any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? Thanks. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? All right. Seeing no further questions. Councilmember Raeder, would you please read Bill number 24-136?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to advance to second reading Bill number 24-186, an ordinance granting a special use permit renewal for Rain Tree Lake Maintenance Facility Building in District R1 on land located at 504 Southwest 163rd Street for a period of 20 years from the previous expiration date, all in accordance with the Articles of the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24-186 by Councilmember Raeder, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Lovell?
It does say ten on this.
It does.
So we, she said twenty, do we need to amend it?
Mr. Head, on the text in our vote cast, it says ten, and then, let me look on the, did you guys look on the, on the document?
The document too says ten, Mayor, so the motion was made to twenty. I don't know if we needed to read it as ten, amend it. I'll let Brian chime in on that.
Quick question. Does the ordinance itself say, down in the body of the ordinance, it also says ten? So the only way to change that at this point would be to, to amend it to say twenty. The other thing you can do, since this is a first-reading item, you can pass it on ten with instruction for staff to correct the Scrivener's error prior to the next meeting, and then we can bring you forth a correct bill for final passage.
But we can amend it right now if we'd like, couldn't we?
You absolutely can.
Would someone like to amend this? Someone different than Councilmember Raider, maybe or Councilmember Lovell?
I'm gonna make a motion to amend this to twenty years, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to amend Bill Number 24-186, make a motion to amend that to period of twenty years.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to amend this, Bill Number 24-186, to a time period of twenty years from the previous expiration date by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Demora. Okay, we're voting on the amendment to twenty years. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight to zero. Now we're back to the amended bill in front of us. This is 24-186, as amended to twenty years. There is a motion on the floor and a second. Council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass eight-zero. Thanks for coming in. Now you don't have, maybe, well, you got one more reading, but then you don't have to come in for twenty years instead of ten, so. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution. I'm gonna have the clerk read it, and then you want to have him come up and speak, or do you want to have someone come up first and speak, Mr. Dunning? Oh, I did. Public comments. Are there any public comments this evening?
I've not received any request for public comments.
Thank you. All right, now, there's a resolution. Do you want to have someone come up first, or shall we read it?
So, resolution, clerk can read. I think you're thinking about a proclamation?
Well, I just want to make sure that they know where this location is.
Oh, I got you. Go ahead and read it. And if, yeah, if you'd like a description, we can have staff come up.
Yeah, if you can get somebody queued up, Mr. Park or someone.
Absolutely.
All right. Baller Al Curry, would you please read Resolution 24-13?
Resolution Number 24-13, a resolution of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, affirmatively assenting to the issuance of revenue bonds payable from revenues to be derived from the operation of Middle Big Creek Sub-District Sewer System and an additional amount of $12 million, together with the previously authorized amount of $106 million, for a total not-to-exceed amount of $118 million, for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, or extending the sewer system serving the Middle Big Creek Sewer Sub-District, including but not limited to the improvements described herein, in accordance with Section 204.569 (3) revised Missouri statutes.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to adopt Resolution 24-13 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Demora, but we're gonna have, maybe Mr. Schoffler, yeah, speak to. This is gonna be extending the Big Creek Interceptor to Greenwood, to the pump station.
Yeah, Middle Big Creek Treatment Plant is located in Pleasant Hill, located there just off of Seventh Highway, and it serves our southeast quadrant of the city, generally that entire southeast side. Greenwood, parts of Raymore, Pleasant Hill, and some unincorporated areas of the, of the district itself. So they built that plant probably fifteen years ago, I think, ten, fifteen years ago, and so now it's time to be upsized. The original cost was thought to be around $106 million, but because of price increases, they're trying to just be safe and get authorization for the additional expenditure to expand the plant.
Very good. I know that most of the other cities have already passed this, passed this resolution. I think we're one of the last ones.
Yes, that's correct. They've, they've all passed it thus far.
There's about, I don't know, eight or so, maybe more, other cities.
Yeah, I believe the last count that I was aware of, there was, take seven, and there's been seven or eight that have voted positive for the, for the issuance of the debt.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, any questions for Mr. Schoffler? Not seeing any, any discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it does pass unanimously, thank you. Now we have a few ordinances from our committees, proposed ordinances forwarded from committee, Item 7A. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill Number 24-187?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, Bill Number 24-187, ordinance authorizing the execution of the first supplemental license for the city monument agreement by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading. Bill Number 24-187 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-187, ordinance authorizing the execution of the first supplemental license for the city monument agreement by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-187 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Raider, would you please read Bill Number 24-188?
Mayor, I move to second reading Bill Number 24-1-188, an ordinance approving change order number four to the agreement with Clarkson Construction Company for the Coburn Road Improvements from M-350 Highway to Douglas Street Project, Project Number 569, to increase the project timeline by 180 days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-188 by Councilmember Raider, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Raider, would you please?
Thank you. I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-188, an ordinance approving change order number four to the agreement with Clarkson Construction Company for the Coburn Road Improvements from M-350 Highway to Douglas Street Project, Project Number 569, to increase the project timeline by 108 days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion moved to adoption, move for adoption, Bill Number 24-188 by Councilmember Raider, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted, thank you all. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill Number 24-189?
I move to advance second reading, Bill Number 24-189, ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 720 for the West Prairie Lee Downtown Interceptor Sewer Project to Kissick Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $5,285,960.50 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-189 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Mayor Patim Lopez. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-189, ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 720 for the West Prairie Lee Downtown Interceptor Sewer Project to Kissick Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $5,285,960.50 and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-189 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted, thank you all. Councilmember Prior, would you please read Bill Number 24-190?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, Bill Number 24-190, an ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 1004 for the I-470 Bore St. Luke's to Coburn Road Project to Redford Construction, Inc., in the amount of $795,070, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion moved to second reading, Bill Number 24-190 by Councilmember Prior, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The bill goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Prior, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-190, an ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 1004 for the I-470 Bore St. Luke's to Coburn Road Project to Redford Construction, Inc., in the amount of $795,070, and authorizing, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-190 by Councilmember Prior, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote.
Mayor, I'm gonna have to do a voice vote because my computer just, well, shut off. Thank you.
Are you gonna vote aye or nay?
Aye.
All right. All votes are in, please record the vote. Was that a motion to adopt? That was, wasn't it? Yeah. So that bill is adopted unanimously, thank you all. All right, now we go to Bill Number 24-191. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read that one for second reading?
I move to second reading, Bill Number 24-191, an ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 962 for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project as part of the II removal SIP lining, manhole rehab, and LCRs FY24 to Kissick Construction Company Incorporated, in the amount of $757,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-191 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of Bill Number 24-191, an ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 962 for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project as part of the II removal SIP lining, manhole rehab, and LCRs FY24 to Kissick Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $757,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-191 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Prior. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Demora, would you please read Bill Number 24-192?
I move to advance to second reading, Bill Number 24-192, an ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 962-2 for the, for the SIP lining and LCRs project as part of the II removal SIP lining, manhole rehab, and LCRs FY24 to Kissick Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $1,233,922, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-192 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Prior. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. If the bill does move to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Demora, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-192, an ordinance awarding the bid for Project Number 962-2 for the SIP lining and LCRs project as part of the, as part of the II removal SIP lining, manhole rehab, and LCRs FY24 to Kissick Construction Company, in the amount of $1,233,922, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-192 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill Number 24-193?
I move to advance to second reading, Bill Number 24-193, an ordinance approving addendum number one to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services dated January 30th, 2023, RFQ Number 2022-030, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated for professional engineering services for AMI system review, for a not-to-exceed amount of $120,438, and authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-193 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-193, an ordinance approving addendum number one to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services dated January 30th, 2023, RFQ Number 2022-030, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company Incorporated for professional engineering services for AMI system review, for a not-to-exceed amount of $120,438, and authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-193 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote.
-030 between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and HDR Engineering, Inc., for professional engineering services for the building and parking expansion at the Water Utility Service Center, for a not-to-exceed amount of $145,850, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-194 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Demora, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-194, an ordinance approving addendum number four to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services dated January 30th, 2023, RFQ 2022-030, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and HDR Engineering, Inc., for the professional engineering services for the building and parking lot expansion at the Water Utility Service Center, for a not-to-exceed amount of $145,850, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 24-194 by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Raider, would you please read Bill Number 24-195?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading, Bill Number 24-195, an ordinance, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Titan Built LLC to set guaranteed maximum price to GMP2 for the joint operations facility and police courts phase-two renovations project in the amount of $7,77,827, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-195 by Councilmember Raider, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes. Councilmember Lovell?
Thank you. I just had a couple questions on this. I, I went back and watched a public works meeting, so I, so these are two separate projects, correct? Or did we, I don't know who on staff I would ask on this, but we had the joint operations facility, and then we had the renovation of the police and courts phase, phase two, where they were two separate RFQs, right?
Hi, Sharon Bloom, Central Building Services. No, this was one RFQ. We put them both together since it's one site, and we decided we'd have one designer design all the work, and one construction manager do all the work, for an economy of scale.
Okay. So, so wouldn't that just be one price, one GMP? So what is the-
No. The first GMP was early acquisition on items for the PD courts. The second one covers earthwork, foundations, and the superstructure for the facility for the JOF. The third GMP will cover everything else.
And I'm just curious, it seems like there, I mean, I could see there's two projects where you would do one for the joint operations facility, which is a ground-up project, and another, I'm just, I guess, I'm just confused why we went, and we've got a third one that's coming, too.
Timing. It's just timing. I mean, the contractor, it was easy for him to start on the things at the police station first, while the JOF was still being designed. on the things at the police station first while the Joff was still being designed.
Okay. So typically when we're getting numbers, we're not in a, we shouldn't be in a design phase, right? So you would actually get, I know we've done this in the past, but we would have a fully baked construction design drawings, and then we would have a GMP for that. So...
Well, I mean, what we had was fully baked for what we were going for the GMP for. We completed that part of the design and went for that GMP.
And that's GMP one?
Yes. And then we completed this part of the design to get to this GMP.
And then the third will be...
Everything else, the last one.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? All right. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Councilmember Rader, I think you are still up for adoption. Please.
I move to adopt for adoption, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-five, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement between the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri and Titan Built LLC to set guaranteed maximum price to GMP two for the joint operations facility and the police courts' phase-two renovations project in the amount of seven-million, seventy-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-five by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Yes.
Sorry, I had one more question. I haven't got to that. So they were two separate bond initiatives, right? And I just wanna make sure that it's okay to bring those two together. Is there anything procedurally that would prohibit us from combining two separate bond initiatives and then kind of bidding them and through...
They're two separate projects on the same bond issue. So they were related to the same question and the same bond issue. And we are still tracking them separately from a financial perspective, though. It's one design consultant, it's one contractor that's building them. We're splitting those invoices to ensure that the projects don't get funded more heavily one side to the other versus what we proposed initially with the question.
Okay. Just making sure. Thanks.
Good questions. Thank you. Okay, we are up for adoption. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Mayor Patim Lopez, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-six?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-six, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine, traffic and motor vehicles of code of ordinances for the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri, by revising appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash one-eight-six, one-nine-six, by Mayor Patim Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Mayor Patim Lopez, would you please?
Yes. I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-six, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine, traffic and motor vehicles of the code of ordinances for the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri, by revising appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-six by Mayor Patim Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you all. Next is, yes, Councilmember Lovell, one more on the...
I'm not gonna have a voice after this.
Yeah, one more. Bill number twenty-four, one-nine-seven, please.
I move to advance second reading, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-seven, an ordinance awarding bid number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-nine to Independent Salt Company for roadway de-icing salt for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewals, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-seven by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-seven, an ordinance awarding bid twenty-two-five dash zero-one-nine to Independent Salt Company for roadway de-icing salt for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewals, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-seven by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Rader. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted. Thank you. And we go to proposed, proposed ordinances. First reading, Councilmember Demora, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-eight?
I move to advance to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-eight, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a consent letter with the National Railroad Passenger Corporation for the Amtrak ADA Station Program Improvements at 220 Southeast Main Street, Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash one-nine-eight by Councilmember Demora, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you. It's time for committee reports. I would say Public Works should not have a committee report at this point. I mean, there's...
It's all there.
It's, there's a lot. There was a lot there. Yep. Well done. Councilmember Pryor?
This is for Councilmember Shields. Finance and Budget will have a meeting November fourth at four PM, and they will discuss the LSEDC PSA.
Very good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Council comments? Excuse me, Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is for Mr. Park, but I was just wondering, I know during Public Works you gave us a quick update on the Coburn Road, that whole mess there. And I know you said that they were, I was wondering if you could give us another update during a council meeting. Thank you.
Glad to. So you're referring to Coburn Road in front of the library, near Rice Road? And so the situation there is we have a development project, and development is making public improvements to Coburn Road. They built a new road just to the west of the library. There's still, those road improvements are not complete. They're in various stages of progress to completion. There's still turn lanes that need to be built. There's signal that needs to be installed. And some of these improvements won't be completed until, like, the signal next summer. It's just the time it takes. But in this interim period, while the road improvements aren't done, there's also coordination with the library that had not been fully completed and vetted out. Some easements that need to work between developer and library ownership. Happy to report that we had a meeting with the developer and library and staff together to try to advance that more expeditiously. They are working on that. We saw plans from the library for where their driveway relocation to reestablish improved access in the area. And I believe they're working on a plan to hopefully get their submittal for a final development plan, to get approval for those modifications in driveway access, submitted to staff probably by the end of this week, if not next week. It should be a fairly quick turnaround. And then they're working with the developer to find their arrangements to get that work done. I believe they're planning on that work being all done in concrete, so it's winter-type work that can be completed, trying to get the resolution to that congestion and the access challenges that are up there as quick as we can.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, first of all, we had the opportunity to get together Friday and Saturday as a group. Really appreciated everybody's time, council members, mayor, staff. Felt like it was very informative. Learned that I was a questioner, as you saw on that agenda item, right, my questions. But I do wanna make sure while it's hot, that some of the things that were kind of born out of that, out of that meeting, a handful of items I think would be appropriate for, like, CEDC items, as we talked about, kind of some housing initiatives. I think Ms. Nassif mentioned to me that we've got some things coming before on CEDC. But then we talked a little bit about maybe LCR, and so I don't know what we would do on that and CEDC, like, maybe opportunities to utilize that, that group to help, you know, revitalize some older neighborhoods. So maybe that's something that could get, maybe it's, you have it coming for CEDC. I don't know Mr. Elam or not. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get there. So I'm just kind of spitballing a few things. I don't know what comes out of it. I know we rediscussed stormwater and some things that we may want to revisit there. I was trying to think of, there was another one of it right now. I think it was CEDC-related, but I think it had to do with some development and design standards. Oh, and Public Works, it was the trash, the right-of-ways, and some of those initiatives maybe that we could work on to, for future developments with the bigger sidewalks and things like that. So just keeping those fresh in mind and making sure that they get to the right committees, and we have an opportunity to explore those further.
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Dunning.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So the, our consultants that were helping us with facilitate that, that retreat are going to bring a final report for us. So that'll create that framework, I'll call it, that we can start putting work plans to place on those various priorities and initiatives that we identified.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Thank you. Just to follow up on that, just thank you to the staff for helping with all of that and setting it up, and so that we do have the framework for how we're gonna move forward, hit the ground running after we get the report and working with staff. So it was, it was a, it was a very good retreat, and they did a good job, the facilitators that we got. All right. Staff roundtable?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Echo the thanks to you, council members, for spending time away from family and friends to do some planning retreat with us as staff. Appreciated that time. If it's okay with you, Mayor, Michael Park would like to share some exciting Public Works news with you real quick, and then I just have a couple other items.
Yeah, thank you. Our Public Works Department has been preparing over the course of the last year for the American Public Works Association accreditation. I'm very proud to say that over the last week, week and a half, we have completed their assessment and review and have been re-accredited. So another maintaining accreditation. We've been accredited now for twenty years in Public Works. And so we get to keep among the ranks of all of our accredited, five accredited agencies here in Public Works, and something I think you all should be very proud of. So we will be setting up a time for APWA to come out to a council meeting to present our accreditation, probably here in the next couple months.
Yep. It showed tonight on the, yep.
A couple other items. Mayor, a reminder, Recycle Fest this Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from nine to noon out at the maintenance facility. Those list of items that can be brought out to recycle are on the city's website, so feel free to check that out. If you were tracking water utilities, I was tracking, eight million, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars and fifty cents worth of infrastructure or reinvestment in infrastructure or engineering that just got approved tonight. So that's a significant investment in the community. Add to that the Middle Big Creek, it's just phenomenal. Let's see, last thing I have, want to show recognition and appreciation to Josh Johnson. This will be his last city council meeting. We appreciate his years of service here at the city with bringing all his knowledge, skills, and abilities to bear for this community. We want to wish him well in his endeavors as he moves on to other things. So we very much appreciate Josh's time here. So thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh Johnson. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dunning. That is it for the evening. We're going to adjourn this meeting at six forty-eight.